Hi, I'm Doug Ross, editorial page editor at The Times. Here with us today for an endorsement interview for Lake County Council, First District, the Democratic nomination, we have Antonio Daggett and Dave Hamm. Also in the room are Robert Blaskowitz, Assistant Managing Editor, Bill Nangle, Managing Editor, and Dennis Rittenmeyer, who's Executive Director of one region. Why don't we begin by discussing your qualifications for this particular office? Antonio?
Well, my background is rather extensive, probably duly aligned with my work as a retired Army Colonel, Chaplain in the military, and also my economic business background. My undergraduate degree is from DePaul University here in the area, accounting degree. Immediately upon graduation, I took a job with the Internal Revenue Service right out of college, worked on corporate taxation and individual taxation as well. Really learned a lot about government aspects and operations of government. Went on, took my accounting degree to the private sector, worked as an internal bank auditor for Citizens National Bank, trying to get a balance of both sides of those aspects, and then worked extensively as an activist in the community with different government projects.
Okay, Dave?
Currently, I'm the current sitting Councilman in the First District of the county of Lake, and I was elected to three terms on the Hammond City Council. Went on from there to become the Fire Chief in the city of Hammond. Served 32 years on the fire department in the city, and prior to that, actually, three years on the police department. So, all told, I have about 35 years in public service, and excellent. Pretty much focused on the financial aspect. Out of all my years on the city council, except for my first year, I was chairman of the Finance Committee, and after six months of serving on the county council, the council unanimously chose me to sit on the Finance Committee of the county council.
Let's talk about the city, the county, rather, is in a different position in terms of revenue than it was. You know, the 1.5% income tax means, as I recall, 1% goes to property tax relief, but the 1/2% could be a game changer for the county.
Seed it in public safety, right.
Right. So, Dave, let's start with you. You know, where do you see this money going, and what do you think that means to changing Lake County?
I think it's very beneficial, which is why it had been discussed on the county level after I'd taken office. It had been discussed in the back, not secretly, but what I mean by that is there were private conversations, "We need to do something, we need to do something." So, I did something that was a little out of protocol. At a county council meeting, which, from The Times, Mr. Dolan was there and reported it, I brought it up. I said, "I think it's time that we need to form a committee on the county income tax." The president, who's a friend of mine, said, I kind of shocked him, he said, "Fine, you're the chairman." And I said, "I'd be happy to be." I took that on, did a lot of work, got a lot of advice on the numbers, because it's easy to say you want to adopt a tax, a county tax. Lake County being the last county out of the 92 counties to have one, we had to come up with what was the correct number. Now, I had different people, actually, different mayors that I'll leave unnamed. One said, "If you're gonna pass it, why don't you just pass a two or three?" I had another one that says, "Why don't you just pass a one for political reasons?" I says, "I'm going to pass what is necessary. I'm not gonna pass too much, and I'm not gonna pass too little." So, the formulation, actually, with the property tax relief credits, the 1%, the quarter percent for the seed it, and the quarter percent for public safety, is very unique to this state. There aren't any other counties that have that formulation, but it's my understanding that about a half a dozen other counties now are considering using our model in their counties in the way the money's distributed. So, it's not a matter of adopting a county tax, it was the formulation on how it was distributed, and how is it going to affect them? We had mandates from the federal government Department of Justice that we had to correct the jail problems. We have the E-911, which I support, that we have to fund after we get the tax levy from the different municipalities, and I think that it's gonna help the county greatly. How each individual municipality spends their dollars is actually out of my hands. I hope they choose to do it wisely. Now, the property tax relief credits, the more municipality is under their property tax caps, the more the, it's not just the homeowners, it's the commercial properties, it's vacant land, every taxpayer will see a reduction in their property taxes, every single taxpayer. It will help supplement the budgets on the public safety and seed it, the way it's legally written is, for any lawful purpose. So, that's what I'm saying. I hope that the communities choose to use those dollars wisely.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate my opponent's willingness to share that, in fact, this initiative was done in secret and privately. That concerns me, and I think it concerns most of the people who pay taxes in First District. It seems to me that the most important thing should have been initially to go to the community, to go to the community, tell the community that this is something that was being considered. And then the process of doing that, establishing town hall meetings, giving feedback from people in the community to determine whether or not this was the appropriate time to move forward on this particular tax. The fact that we have not had such a tax in 92 years, or however long that's been, is not the basis for determining whether or not it's time to raise revenue. It concerned me, and I think it concerned many people, that the way that, the process in which this was done did not include the voice of the First District, for the most part. My opponent mentioned clearly that he had spoke to mayors about it, but the last time I checked, you know, each of the mayors in the municipality, they all have one vote. We need to make sure that we are willing to hear what people in the district are saying, and that particularly concerns me. There's no question that there's been a federal mandate in place to deal with the jail situation. Obviously, long overdue, and it's so good that the process has begun. But again, we go to the community, we ask the community, we make sure the community understands what our direction is and why we're moving forward in this particular manner. As a result of the 1.5, just crunching the numbers, and you know, you have to forgive me as an auditor and a tax guy, I crunch a lot of numbers. Crunching the numbers will leave the county currently with a $7 million surplus. Now, typically, government entities, government agencies should not operate at a surplus, because when a government agency is operating at a surplus, that means the average Joe on the street has less in his or her bank account to spend to stimulate the economy. You know, all the governmental audits that I've done in large corporations, you know, we always sought to make sure that that governmental agency was balancing at the end of the year, you know, that your expenses and your revenues balanced out to zero. That was an effective operation of a government agency. The fact that we're looking at a surplus in county government, when we're in the midst, still, of coming out of recession, trying to get an economy moving and going forward, is something that I think really should have been taken into consideration. There's no question that we needed to raise some revenue, but I think it needed to be done across the board. The corporations portion of this is receiving a great deal amount of money out of that tax and not putting any money into it, to the tune of about $60 million. This concerns me, because the burden needs to be shared across the board, not only on the backs of the middle class and the poor, but across the board, corporations as well. We see interlocal agreements that need to be done. Clearly, there was a need for it, but the way we go about doing it must include the voice of the community. I say loud and clear, stop, no more county taxes. You know, we need to deal with working within our budget. We know that everyone in America who lives by a budget has to work within the means of that budget. We want the same thing for government as well, to work within the means of that government, of that budget, and to ensure that the services are provided. You know, at this particular junction, there's no question that there's a lot of things that need to be done in the jail. We've seen the state closely, slowly close many of its mental health facilities throughout the state. So, we've had an explosion in our jail of mental illness amongst many. Many of our inmates that are in the jail are there really because of mental illness issues as opposed to criminality. We need to look at that and see now how we can use this additional surplus, because that's what the question was. How do we, how do we use this additional surplus that's available? We look at an issue like the mental health need in our jails, providing additional mental health counseling for inmates, trying to make sure that we identify those who are dealing with mental health issues now that the state is no longer shouldering that responsibility with mental health facilities, and make sure that this additional surplus of money can be used to help those who are incarcerated with mental illnesses, and to get the counseling that they need to be able to find themselves back into society so we can reduce the recidivism rate. These things are critical, and I think these are the questions that many of our residents have, but I would be totally against any more, and I stand, no more county taxes, no more county taxes. At this point, we need to make sure that we go to the communities, go to the cities, go to the towns, and make sure that we have their direction in mind as opposed to our personal interests, and not be a rubber stamp for any mayor, not be a rubber stamp for anyone, but be willing to stand on what the community needs and what's best for them.
Dave, I think that begs a response.
Well, thank you. I didn't know if I'd have an opportunity. There's not a, there is not a $7 million surplus. As a matter of fact, we had to, on the county council, in conjunction with the county commissioners, make revisions to the county employee healthcare plan, so that we could balance our budget. And we did balance our budget this year. The year before I got on the county council, the county was forced to borrow $15 million just to meet payroll. That's just to meet payroll, otherwise the payroll checks were going to bounce. That was after almost 400 employees had been reduced through attrition. So, there is no surplus, we have a perfect balance. DLGF certified our budget, and it's exactly where we're supposed to be. There's no surplus, there's no shortfall. I think the politically astute thing to do would have been to do what some other people did, I'm not referring to my opponent, he wasn't there, and that's to say, "I'm against the county tax." I think the responsible thing to do was what I did, and that was to adopt a county tax. I know it might not be popular amongst the electorate, but it was the right thing to do, and that's what I will continue doing, is the right thing, whether it's popular or not.
The importance in that, if it's okay, I'll respond to that. The importance of adopting any tax is based on what's good for the people. That the people weren't even consulted in this process, I think, is something that rubs so many of us the wrong way, not only the electorate, but the average guy on the street. Talk to a resident in Munster, talk to a resident in Whiting, talk to these residents, and they will give you the feedback that's so important that should have been sought on the front end. Now, there's no question that revenue was needed, but you know, I always use the analogy as a father of 10 children, you know, I always use the analogy, one of my kids come to me and say, "Dad, you know, it's cold in my bedroom. Turn the heat up," the kid will say to me. I'll say, "Son or daughter, is the window closed in your room?" Because we're not going to turn the heat up until you close the window in your room. A thorough analysis of waste should have taken place prior to raising taxes. We should have made sure that, in fact, if we are going to seek this for the residents, let's close some of the windows where the waste is taking place. My opponent indicated a shortfall. To me, that shows a lack of vision, that shows a lack of preparedness. You know, even in auditing some of the larger corporations, for them to have a shortfall that large would require certain audit findings, and yet, this was something that the opponent, my opponent mentioned was the case. The issue is making sure that we reduce any element of waste to a de minimis amount, and then at that point, consider looking at taxes. And I don't think that that was fairly done as it relates to First District.
So, everybody talks about waste in county government. Where do you see waste that needs to be cut? Dave, let's start with you.
I don't, the employees, there might have been waste prior to me being there, but as I stated, the, there used to be 2,100 people that were county employees, there are now 1,700 people. The waste, and I've studied it as deeply as one can, has been cut. I don't see where the waste exists currently in county government.
Well, the federal government surely did feel that that was the case, particularly in the jail, and going into that jail, seeing enormous amounts of things that needed to be changed. One clearly was the element of waste in the report that was available, that's available through the process of the federal mandate. Again, when I say waste, I don't mean employees, not at all. In fact, I think we've cut too far to the bone on losing some of the jobs of the employees in the county. Some of those jobs should not have been cut. But what we do need to do at this point is we need to make sure that as we move forward, we consider what the community is telling us. We are elected officials. We're not there to represent our personal interests, we're not there to represent a particular mayor's interest, we represent a district, and therefore, responsible for all the residents of Whiting, most of the residents of Hammond, and a portion of the residents of Munster up to Ridge Road. So, we have a responsibility, and that responsibility, I think, needs to be taken seriously, and our own personal interests and self-desires must be put on the back burner.
Okay. One of the things that Indiana, the state government just did, was open the opportunity for you to do a number of different things with the business personal property tax. You know, you could do a long-term abatement of 20 years, you could phase it out, which as I recall is, what, 17% or so of the county's tax base? You know, what would you have the county do to respond? Antonio?
At this point, I think what we would need to do is consider the possibility of eventually phasing it out, particularly if we, we have this additional income now from our county tax, it may be time to look at that as phasing that out, and again, trying to shore up, trying to shore up our economics at this particular junction, so we're in a position to create more jobs in this county. You know, I'm looking at a particular opportunity with our large industries in this area. I think it's time for us to look at the possibility of meeting those industries and assisting them in retrofitting much of their equipment. Much of the equipment in these industries in this northwest Indiana area can be retrofitted. That would create huge amounts of jobs at this particular point, talk about millions of dollars, and would allow us also to deal with the struggles that we have in this area, our climate and environmental struggles. We just, there was a recent study, recent article in the paper about the health conditions of the counties, how that just recently came out. And, you know, we rank pretty low as a county when it comes to a county that is, that the people are healthy, are in good, healthy shape based on the climate, based on the ecology. I think this retrofitting idea would be great at this particular junction. We could phase out the abatements, but then we could look into working with these industries right here in this area to go through a process of retrofitting their equipment, so we can have equipment that is more ecological friendly. You know, as a chaplain at St. Catherine Hospital, I get a chance to see many, many residents coming into that hospital, and most, almost, I would say almost 60% of the people that I've seen coming into that hospital during the course of the five years I've been there has been for respiratory situations. So, we need to do something about our climate here in northwest Indiana. I think the article supports that, and I think these are ideas that are long overdue at this junction.
Okay, Dave?
I think that extending the opportunity to abate properties from 10 years to 20 years is great. Everybody can take that, take advantage of that if they so choose. With the business personal property tax, my concern, and a lot of things I agree with the governor, but with that being the governor's agenda, I would like to have seen a way to replace those dollars. But that wasn't included in that piece of legislation. That's my only concern. Minus that, I have no problems with the elimination of the personal, business personal property tax, similar to what happened with the inventory tax. That's all good. But there has to be an opportunity to replace those dollars, so that services can be provided on municipal levels, county levels, and state levels. But extending it to 20, it's great. The average citizen, and every time I try to talk to a citizen, they feel that a tax abatement means that it's tax-free. They don't understand that it's a stair-step process, and when I inform them of that, but it's hard to get that message to a half a million people in this county. It doesn't mean that a business is tax-free for 10 years. It means that the first year, under a, whether it be a 3, a 6, a 10, or now a 20-year abatement, you'll pay, the first year is free. Then it gradually goes up until the last year, you're paying 90% of what you would have paid if the abatement had not been granted. All said and done, 50% of the taxes will have been paid regardless of the term of the abatement, so I think extending it from 10 to 20, I think it's great, because you have to follow your annual reports to make sure that they're in compliance and everything. If they're not, I've been on the city council, where we've pulled abatements for Niagara over in Hammond, because they didn't live up to the obligations met in the abatement. So, I think it's great. I just would have liked to have seen that one extra thing added in the legislation, and I expressed that, actually, to Senator Kenley, as well as Senator Charbonneau, that I would have liked to have seen that, but I don't always get what I want.
You know, it's interesting, because the residents in the district, we have to have confidence and trust in the wisdom and the ability to understand what's going on that we find in the district. My opponent indicated how difficult it was for him to get the residents to understand something. You know, it's, understanding starts off with communication, sitting down and talking to the residents. You know, that would be one of my biggest, my biggest thrust, to establish town hall meetings in the towns that are, that are part of this district. You sit down and you talk to the residents, you hear what they have to say. They'll surprise you. They're a lot more intelligent, I think, than often elected officials will give them credit for. We owe that to them, because we are elected on their behalf. You know, again, the, once, when you begin to start talking about business personal property tax abatements, then again, you're going to be talking about replacement income, and I hope, hopefully, we're not talking about more county taxes. At this point, I think, you know, that well is pretty much run dry, and we need to make sure that we can move on forward within, within the means in which we can do that at this junction.
Okay. Bill, Robert, did either of you have questions?
We have a question on public transportation and what you think the county's role can be in increasing access to public transportation for residents here.
South, or Antonio? Sure. The county council appropriated the $2 million, well, actually, more than that, for the annual capital improvement plan to the commissioners. We approved this, this last year, for this year, and $2 million of the counties, seed it, is going for South Shore. In addition to that, I agree with the congressman, and have been going around with the congressman, as well as Michael Griffin from Highland, and Commissioner Repay. We would like to expand on top of the South Shore extension, what we'd like to do is add busing. So, I'm in favor of 100% of, and always have been, public transportation. So, I support the South Shore with the congressman, I stand behind him, I attended these different meetings when we move around the county, even outside of my district, I will attend with the congressman, and I think that we need to add busing to that.
Yeah, I think busing is actually the key. There's no question that the, the extension, I think, would be very beneficial, and I do support the extension. But again, I think priorities are always important, and the priority for the residents in northwest Indiana, in this district, is busing. Some time ago, we lost our bus transportation in Hammond, and as a result, we also, and not too long before that or after that, we also lost our healthcare clinic there in Hammond. So, there's no question that the local transportation has got to be a priority, particularly when we talk in terms of transportation. We can't forget that, you know, we've come through a pretty brutal winter, and our roads are in horrible shape right now. Funding, dollars need to be spent to fix our roads currently first. You know, let's fix our roads currently first. Yes, I think the South Shore extension is an excellent idea, but you know, we need to focus on what our residents are dealing with on a daily basis, and we need to fix these roads, and we need to make sure that we have bus transportation within our local areas, so our residents can get where they need to be.
Can I, can I, I look at, I look at busing, and my opponent is 100% correct, I commend you, in regards to the Hammond busing, but I'm not talking about Hammond busing, I'm talking about the RBA, which I was sad to see go away. I think we need regional busing. I'm not content with a bus taking somebody from the Hessfeld section of Hammond to the Robertsdale section. They need to commute maybe to Southlake Mall, maybe to medical facilities throughout this county, and I'm looking at a regional approach on the busing issue and not a city approach. The Hammond Health Department, I feel, was a waste. I know that you, but my opponent brought it up. It was redundancy. There's a county health department, there's a county weights and measures. One community, it happened to be Hammond, which is the biggest portion of what Antonio and I are running for, it was a redundancy. That was the waste. So, I was in favor of getting rid of the health department and the weights and measures, because we have a county department that can handle that. But I think we need to look at a regional approach on the busing, and not say, "Hammond doesn't have busing," or "Whiting doesn't have this," or, I think it needs to be, we need to look at a grand plan, and it needs to be a regional approach.
Has anyone, has anyone sat through this winter but me? This has been a brutal winter, and to tell us that a mom who doesn't have a car, but two small children that live in Hammond can somehow get out to the county healthcare, county healthcare clinic? Really? How realistic is that? This is the Midwest, gentlemen, and the reality is that we have families who don't have access to transportation, who do need to be able to get their small children out to a clinic and trying to make it all the way out to Crown Point. When, if we, if we did have that clinic there locally, the child would be able to see a doctor in the morning and be in school that afternoon. I think it's, I think it's insensitive. But I think, again, unless we go and talk to the residents and find out what their priorities are, that's critical. Yes, there's no problem, there's no problem with how we do the busing, whether regional or local, the issue is the results, the issue is the results. And quite, and right now, we don't have that kind of results in Hammond or Whiting. We don't have the public transportation that's needed to get young families who can't afford a vehicle to get their children to the healthcare that they need. You know, we, it's great to have a grand plan, but if it doesn't reach people where they're living, then it's simply just that, it's just a grand plan.
Okay. I guess that's just about all the time we have. Dennis, did you have a question?
I do. I was gonna ask about the jail, but since you brought up transportation, I'll ask about transportation. Would you favor the county council appropriating money to indeed create a regional transportation system?
Oh, I would have no problem.
They failed to do that for quite a long time.
They have, they have consistently, but I do think that that's something that needs to be revisited. Again, I'm not so concerned with the process as I am the results. If that would work to make sure that this family that we kind of highlighted here in this discussion would be able to have access to that, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But again, it's the results, you know, it's the results. The devil would be in the details there, and there's been a problem consistently with the council trying to make that happen. But again, this need to make sure that our plans are reaching the average man and woman on the street is critical. Something as simple as making sure that the county council can meet at a time during the day when people can actually come. You know, at one point prior to, prior to the whole, you know, shenanigan or fiasco of whatever you want to call it with the county tax, the county council did vote to move their meetings to the evening, when people actually couldn't attend in the evenings. And afterwards, for some reason, my opponent voted to move those meetings back to the day, when people are not able to get to those meetings. Again, there seems to be a constant theme of not reaching out to the residents of the district, and I think that's what I would bring to the table. of the district, and I think that's what I would bring to the table.
Mr. Ross, and in regards to moving the council meetings, we, we had council meetings during the day. They started 10:00 AM, and it was suggested that we move them to an evening so that more people could attend. So, we did that for four months and kept track of how many people, minus the press and the department heads attended, and more attended during the day. Due to that fact, after four months in us keeping track, I then voted to move them back during the day because we had a larger attendance.
Okay. And you wanted to ask about the jail.
Well, again, a question from Mr. Dave because I didn't quite understand. Yesterday, I think it was yesterday, we had the sheriff candidates in, and heard a lot about the jail, as you might imagine. And one of the facts I was struck by was the, the long period of time during which the corrections officer had not gotten any raises. And Sheriff Bunsen said he was able to make arrangements for those raises this year. But I'm having a hard time understanding how it is that the jail is in such financial trouble, they haven't been able to give raises. It's all about money, and yet you alleged that there was waste, but not in personnel. Where, where would you say the waste is in the jail system that we operate out of the county?
Well, let's, let's take a look at the jail situation as it stood prior to the federal people coming in. You had horrible living conditions. You had people sleeping on the floors. You had just huge overcrowding. My, the process, the process of that, in my mind, says that we need to make sure that humane conditions exist within the jail. The fact that, and I don't base it on the fact that the individuals, the correction officers haven't received, have not received raises, although they, they most certainly should have a long time ago. I think that there were other ways that we could have looked at the waste. Now, I haven't looked at the county jail budget per se, but overall, I think we can look at the administrative aspect of it to see whether or not there was a duplication of, of, of jobs, and a duplication of responsibility, not so much of jobs. I think that we could have looked at that, and we could have determined whether or not there was enough dollars there to strengthen the, the need for mental health help in that jail, as well as raises for the county officers as well. So, I think that, you know, and again, having been, having worked with the IRS, having been an IRS agent, I can look at budgets, and I can find waste in budgets, I can find waste in administrative aspects of budgets, I can find that. And I think that, that clearly was an opportunity to do that prior to raising revenue.
Mr. Rittenmeyer, one of the, one of the mandates from the DOJ was that more correctional officers be hired. Didn't make me happy, but I don't argue with the DOJ. I know where they're at on the food chain, and I respect that. We hired 30 more. Now, they informed us that we need to hire 24 more. I understand that. We will do so. As far as raises for correctional officers, myself, Sheriff Bunsen will attest to this. I was the negotiator for the county that granted the raises, that submitted that recommendation to the council, and they approved it. So, I, this is the first year after, I can't remember, six or seven years, they had not received a raise. I found the money, and we granted them a raise. I negotiated, we picked up their portion of the pension contribution, and I gave them a 2% raise the first year as the lead negotiator.
And they're not highly paid to begin with.
That is correct. And the, if I'm not mistaken, it was about 82% approval that their body approved that by. They were extremely happy.
Sure.
And of course, those raises, as you have said, long overdue.
Yes.
Long overdue, should have been done years ago. I, I quite frankly, visited the county building many times and saw some of the officers standing out there doing some informational pickets. They had gotten to a point where they were very concerned about this. My point is, when it reaches that point, then it's gone on too long, it should have been dealt with some time ago. But again, again, it's a willingness to go to people and ask them what their priorities are. I think that's important.
There's three different groups. There's merit officers, there's correctional officers, and then there's court security.
Correct.
The correctional officers, yes, I was asked by our president, Councilman Belski, to lead those negotiations. I did so with Councilman Dernow, and Councilwoman Sid, Councilwoman Sid, for whatever reason, I don't know if it was an emergency, didn't attend the meetings myself, and Councilman Dernow did, and like I said, I led those negotiations, and I was able to pay, pick up their portion of the pension contribution, which was 1.5%, as well as, which means they're also paying the county tax. So, when I, when I offered to pick up their, their portion of the pension contribution, that was a wash, and then I gave them a 2% raise, and that was the first time in, I believe, seven years, I could be mistaken.
It was some number like that, I think, that we heard.
If I'm, if not, it could have been six. I'm not intentionally trying to mislead you.
A long time.
Okay. One last question. What have we not asked you that we should have? Antonio, let's start with you.
Well, again, at this point, I think my background, the finance background that I bring to the table is critical. The ability to actually look at budgets and determine where, where spending can be dealt with, as, as well as where we can increase our efficiency, our, you know, as beneficial. The important thing that I think I want to make sure that, that we leave here is, this is a district council position. You're representing a district, not a particular city, not a particular mayor. Your job then therefore is to do what's best for the entire district, as opposed to one particular entity of the district. There's discussion about inter-local agreement for a 911 center, and the focus on that seems to be particularly East Chicago. Why not consider Whiting as an opportunity in that as well? You know, if you are the advocate for the district, you're fighting for the district, you're there to fight for the district and try to make a difference, and not play mayors against each other within the district. I think at this point, we need an independent Democratic voice that will make a strong difference and is willing to hear what the people have to say, and, and take that as their marching orders.
Okay, Dave?
The E911, there's an E911 commission, and the dark side, the, the backup side, was chosen by the 911 commission. It's not chosen by the, by the county council. And the county, I'm sorry, the E911 commission chose East Chicago. They evaluated a number of different places, and they're the ones that make that determination, not the county council. I think the question, Mr. Ross, that you didn't, maybe you didn't ask, which is how you poll, what else do you want to do that, that you haven't discussed? What would I like to do? I'm currently working with current sheriff, Mr. Rittenmeyer, Sheriff Bunsen, as well as Judge Moss, and Judge Cantrell, and Commissioner Repay on the point person on the county council to establish a veterans' court. Veterans are coming back, we're sending them out, they're protecting us on a national level, our security, and they're coming back with PTSD, they're coming back with some drug problems that are, that are related to the veterans, and I'm working on establishing a veterans' court as we speak. The other thing I would like to do is to, I don't know if the correct word is to depopulate or unpopulate that county jail. It costs us a fortune to house those prisoners. And I might sound like an ultra-liberal, but so be it. I'm going to tell you how I feel. I say for some of these minor drug offenses, maybe marijuana, I'm talking about minors, first-time offenders, I'm in favor of hiring some more probation officers. You can say, "You want to hire more county employees?" Yes, I do. I want to hire some more probation officers, get those minor offenders out of that jail. It's costing us a fortune. They'd still be supervised by probation officers. There'd be at-home visits, and these people wouldn't be sitting in jail, they could go to work and provide for their families instead of sitting in that jail for minor offenses. And that's what I'm working on, and I've got the judges, to be honest with you, Judge Snyder, Judge Moss, Judge Villapondo, they're all in agreement with me. They're saying, "We're with you." So, I'm working on getting the funding. We can take those people out of jail that have done something wrong and punish them in another way and get them back on the right track without making them just sit there in jail and cost us a fortune and waste their time.
In all due respect, I just want to quickly just follow up with that. You know, you know, I've served almost 30 years in the military, and again, this speaks to going to individuals who have the experience, have the understanding, and asking them, "What should we do?" Now, the veterans' court on its face is a great idea. Great idea, you would think. The problem is, by that time, the veteran is in court. The funding should be done on the front end in prevention. As a chaplain, I've spent 23 years working with military families, constant deployment. My last duty station was at the Pentagon. A soldier couldn't be put back on active duty into service unless they came to the chaplain and, and was debriefed in the process. But here again, this unwillingness to kind of go to those who, 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 who we should be listening to to find out information. The veterans' court is a great idea, but it's like closing the barn door after the horse is gone. We need to put that funding, as much of funding as we can, on the preventive aspect of that. Why do veterans get in trouble in the first place? Yeah, PTSD, no question is an issue, but there's an enormous rate, unacceptable rate of suicide among our veterans. That has to be dealt with right away, immediately. That has to be dealt with from, from the county level, from all level, all hands on deck when it comes to that. But here again, we need individuals who have the kind of experience to say to the judges, "Sir or ma'am, let's look at putting dollars on the front end of prevention." We do it with juveniles, we want to, we want to put, we have juvenile prevention programs before the juvenile finds himself in court. Again, we need to look at that as a possible opportunity. Then the other thing I would do is the retrofitting. I want to, I want to reiterate that. We need to begin to talk, start a dialogue with these corporations in regards to the retrofitting of much of their, billions of dollars of their equipment. That would provide jobs, and it would also help the, the ecological situation here in northwest Indiana. There's much that we can do, and, and we need someone who has an independent voice who's willing to hear all sides and not be beholden to any one side.
Okay. Well, I'm afraid that's all the time we have. Doug Ross, again, here with Antonio Daggett, Dave Hamm, and other members of the editorial board. Thank you for viewing.